Call it in order. Tonight, we're gonna be led in the pledge by David Carey, Smyrna High School student.
Will you please follow me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everybody to this week's work session. We're gonna do things just a little bit out of order tonight. Well, not out of order, but when we get to Mr. Clardy, we're gonna hear his report tonight instead of Thursday night. As he's, Mr. Sandvig gotta go health and ed, is it health and ed?
Oh, it's a full commission for our funding for the buildings.
When we get to that, we'll go ahead and let him give his report. So, Mr. Odom, turn it over to you.
I think you're ready for your consent agenda, see if any of them wants to, questions on that? Is that where we are now?
I guess the point on that is that with all new startups, as far as uniforms and athletic equipment, we always provide the startup, but as far as replacement on those things, those come from the boosters or stakeholders in the future. So, it's not that they're getting anything that we haven't already given other new schools, but they get startups.
Right, they do. The initial uniforms and equipment and that sort of thing, starting with that.
I had some questions about the football helmets. I've been told that the information that's on the agenda is not 100% accurate, at least I'm not understanding. It seemed to me that the highlight was for helmet manufactured by Schutt, S-C-H-U-T-T. And yet, that description is not accurate as the Rydell manufacturer is highlighted. So, Mr. Sandvig has provided additional information. I may have some comments on Thursday.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Odom.
Okay, taking a look at the showcase for, this week will be the Student Art Showcase, and that will be with the artists in our building. Ms. Barnes will head that up, and we should have a good audience, I think. Typically, that turns out to be one of our largest for the year as parents and others come for that. So, we'll be having that Thursday evening. And we go now to project status update. I guess we're already except for visitors, the yours, Mr. Clardy.
Thank you, Mr. Odom.
First thing we're going to do is look at Stewart Creek High School. Stewart Creek is now in the finished stage. Every section of the building is being finished, the exterior, we're putting in sidewalks and doing some of the grading, finished grading on the outside of the lot, and then we are working on the sports complex. We got the, the bleachers pretty much finished, we got the press box in place, we got the track curb board, and several things like that, and are closing in on finishing the concession. So, I have several pictures that we will look at. This is aerial view coming from the west to the east, and that is the front of the building, large footprint. This is coming from the south to the north, there's sports complex, and we have, the building is changing so rapidly now, you'll see that when this was taken just a few days ago, the press box is not in on the bleachers. But now, in a picture later, you will see that. And this is one coming from Foxland Drive, you can see Foxland down there in the right corner of the screen or the back of the building. This is one of the inside quarters coming down from, in from the outside in the CTE wing. This is CSI lab in Criminal Justice Park. Cosmetology. And this is over by the gym, sidewalk is going in, and you see the sound grading that's going on there as they're placing tops all along the sidewalk. On the sports complex, this is the ticket booth, and of course, that's a column that's going up for a gate to go on. This is the same wing you saw a while ago, except coming from the other direction. Whiteboards are out there, the restrooms are closing in on finishing those. This is the main office area, there's your Red Hawk Red. And the media center or library, which is just inside the foyer at the front. One of the science labs. These are getting very close to being finished, other than dropping the ceiling and final cleaning. This is electrical line going into the concession, and up on the right side, you can see the press box top of the home seating. And also, I had a question. Someone called me recently, asked me about handicap access. If you look on the right, you'll see at the top, you'll see the handicap ramp that's coming up into the bleachers there, and there's a dedicated group of seats there that can be used for wheelchair or et cetera. This is the curb around the track and the football field on the inside, and then the visitor bleachers. You can also see the ramp going up there. Home bleachers, there's a better picture of the handicap access there at the right of the screen. Okay, our capital improvement, I'll give you status up on that. Middle, Smyrna Middle, elementary, I mean, middle school re-roof is getting ready to start, and the respective materials can be delivered any time. Holloway High School window replacement is 95% complete, and we're waiting for the fire escape windows to come in, it's just down a couple door frames where we are changing, changing the access to the back cafeteria so they can bring food in through that door. This is the new look with the new windows. That's the annex building over there with CTE section. And this is the front of the building, looks so much better with those dark windows in it. And that's down the side. Central office parking, we've added some parking places back here in the back, mainly to keep some of the overflow from adult ed, but also to get engineering and construction trucks off the street back there to get them out of the way for, so other people can have access to that back parking lot. We're still gonna fill some cracks and seal this soon as the weather gets stable. Wilson Elementary pavement, as you know, Angie Drive was almost destroyed by the housing construction that went on, and of subdivisions around there, our school was built, of course, we own that road, and we're having to redo some of that, so I have some pictures of that. We did re-strike the internal parking lot and drive on that school site. As you can see, new handicap faces marked out. Down the front, the lanes are divided. This is at Angie Drive and Jefferson Pike. We added this turn lane, we had a hangup there where traffic was getting caught on sight. They couldn't go right, they had to wait, pull up there one car at a time, but we've added a turn lane to get those better access to Jefferson Pike. And last Castle Elementary Sewer is getting close to be completed. It should be complete in the next two or three weeks. I think a week has gone by since I've written this, so a couple more weeks. Have some photos of that. This, the drain field and the drip system are in these areas that I'm showing you now, and you can see where they've been graded out and some, but they plow those in now and don't do a lot of disturbing. So, this'll be a lush green lawn as soon as we get to operating that. Another area. This is the filter back in the back, and there, I believe that fence is up now. And then the roof, we re-roofed that building this year, so it's complete. We're doing a balasted section on the Smyrna primary this year, and it's complete.
What does that mean, balasted?
It is a section of roof that was not fully adhered, but it had rock on it to hold it down and keep the wind from blowing it off, so we removed that and fully adhered the roof now. And we're changing that back to white roofing now instead of the black, which gives us cut down on solar gain and also helps on energy. Blackman High School paving for this year is complete. Central Magnet Parking is complete, and I've got some pictures of that. We added this parking lot back in the back by the soccer field. And that's back there, close to that old helicopter pad that the medical center used to use. So, this is during the day, so it looks like we have plenty of parking to this point. And then, we were asked by Mrs. Nolan and the county mayor to do a five-year capital improvement plan, and you have a copy of it laying at your place there. And this is not carved in stone, so we didn't put a motion in here for voting on it because normally, we'll lay one of these plans out, and then it will change if the need change. So, I just wanted to get a bottom-line figure of what we would try to spend for a year if the money was available through the development there. And you can look through that, 1314 is 2.8 million, and that covers everything from the sewer system at Buchanan, major re-roofing, paving and striping, gymnasium seats replacement at Oakland Riverdale, HVAC, at Blackman in Eagleville, and window replacement. Now, these are the only two buildings in the county that we're lacking on the window replacements, get totally new windows. Mr. Blair, you can call, we've been working on that now for nine years to get all those replaced, so we're, we're closing in on it.
Mr. Clardy?
Yes?
What do we, what's the normal life we get out of said bleachers? We're replacing Oakland Riverdale, for example, those have been there how long, would you guess?
Well, those, those were put in when the school was built, and that was built in, what, in 72?
I thought they'd been replaced one time already, no?
Those are the wooden jobs.
Those are the wooden ones.
These are the ones up above, and the, you can remember, recall, had bad shape there in, and we've been trying to get them worked in for four or five years now. Finally managed to get them in the program so we can get them done. Hope they're gonna replace this year, so they've lasted, what, 30, 30 years?
Right.
Pretty impressive.
And we've also started a bleacher inspection program where we're going through there now and inspecting those yearly and replacing the things that need to be replaced, instead of just letting them get run down to nothing so we have to replace the whole thing. We're trying to invest a little money in them yearly now. Or the ones that we, at least a few every year, a few schools every year to try to keep those on par and take care of them and not create any safety issues with them. 2014 and 15, Smyrna Elementary bleacher replacement there, roofing HVAC replacement. 15, 16, we have more re-roofing, and now with 45 buildings, plus some other odds and ends, it's very important that we stay on top of this roofing. And I would venture to say that you're not getting calls on roofing issues like you used to. You've been on the board for a while, you know what I'm talking about. Paving, HVAC replacement. And then moved to 16, 17, major re-roofing, paving and HVAC replacement, and that comes out at 2.8 million. And then the last year, which is 2017 and 18, we have several major re-roofing, paving, and HVAC replacement on that. So, a lot of these window units, after, you know, being in there for 25 years, or, I mean, through the wall units, we have to replace those. Heating and cooling pack, yes.
Mr. Clardy, on a, with major re-roofing, is that basically just scraping the entire roof and putting down a whole new membrane? I mean, just total replacement of what's above?
It is, it is pretty much, and what we've been doing to be able to get our money's worth, instead of doing completely all the way down to metal, we've been removing the ballast and some of the other stuff, off, materials off the roof, putting a recovery board down, which amounts to a blackboard that screws down into the roof, and then adhering a totally new membrane to it. And that's on the flat roofs, and on the metal roof, we've been, they've been taking care of themselves, except for one issue that was discovered at Eagleville on the part that was done several years ago out there where we had some incorrect installation, and we went back and made the manufacturer and the installer replace that.
I would think those through the wall units and HVAC, the sear values are so much higher than some of those original units. I would think that would be quite a gain there, just in energy savings.
It is, energy saving. They use a lot less electricity, they're very much more efficient, and, you know, all of them are energy star rated now, so they do save quite a bit of money in energy costs. And technology work tickets, 2012, 2013, we have received a total of 9,989 for this fiscal year so far. And we've completed 9,623 of those, 366 open. These tickets range from replacing a mouse to rewiring computer labs. And thanks to Steve Solomon, Director of Technology Hardware Systems, his crew, Amy Blatton and SBS, for job well done on that. We've come a long way on that also. And then maintenance work tickets, 2012, 2013, we've received 7,272 work tickets this fiscal year. We have completed 7,088 with 184 open. At this time, these tickets range from replacing washers and faucets to replacing compressors and HVAC units. And thanks to Kenneth Clardy, Director of Maintenance, his crew for doing a great job on those.
Mr. Odom, could I interject something?
Yes, sir.
I do not want us to ever forget former county commission chairman of Health Ed, Dr. Ball Bullen, for basically forcing this five cents out of the tax rate to go into this capital projects fund because we're getting so many things done that were not done consistently before. And I almost feel like we ought to have something named after him, you know, maybe the Ball Bullen Fund, I don't know, but...
We're giving him another job tonight, so I don't know.
But what he did, and that suggestion was, has really just completely changed the face of our system in basically updating and repairing and correcting. And the other thing I would like to say is, I remember just coming on the board and seeing principals and meeting them, and they would talk about maybe filing a service order and waiting for it to come. And then, once Mr. Clardy became in charge of the program, they had to be careful when they ordered it because they might not be ready for it to be repaired at that moment. So, you and your, your professionals have really come a long way in making sure that instant service has come along, so.
They've done, we've got a great bunch of people working in the engineering and maintenance department, and just a bunch of great blue collar guys back there wanna do their job and do it right, and they do, they do a fantastic job.
Very much so.
Just, just curious, Mr. Clardy, how many, how many total do you have working back there?
We've got 50 mechanics in the maintenance, plus the management positions over there. So, then I have about four in my department, and then we've got approximately 20 in the technology department and technicians.
I guess, large majority are probably licensed also, aren't they?
We have several licensed, we have a bunch of licensed plumbers, licensed electricians, we have some contractors, just HVAC technicians who have been through school. We have certified on all kinds of different equipment. We started a safety program back. They're qualified to lift, use bucket trucks, and even we qualify our leak custodians under lift operations so they safely change the lights and the gyms and those kinds of things. So, we've got a bunch of qualified guys and girls.
Anybody else?
What Mr. Blair was speaking of, for people that might be on TV watching us and talking about Dr. Bullen and all tonight, and new board members, several years ago, and I say Dr. Bullen kinda led the way, but the wisdom of the other commissioners, they did vote to set aside five cents on the property tax rate for us to repair buildings. I mean, it's saving us money because we're having damage from leaks, that what started out as one leak, it would damage something else, and units, and electrical units and things, and by being able to have this on a constant basis and being able to, to look out several years ahead of what we can do with replacement, is saving us money. I mean, because before it's really critical, we've been able to address it very quickly. It's a wonderful thing.
If I understand it correctly, that money, that's what that money has to be used for. It is dedicated there, it cannot be used for anything else. If it weren't there, we'd be trying to find $2.88 in the budget that might find its way toward the bottom.
If you're teaming as principal, I bet you would like to head that fun working for you.
Sure. For all, I mean, it's been said already, I mean, the ability we've had through good people, with financials, to do it as well, keep our buildings up, is really incredible. And in being in state meetings like we were today, you, you get a sense that, you come back to those, you recognize just how, how well we do most of these things compared to other systems, and it's, we're fortunate to be able to do it.
Were you at Oakland when we were having all that problem out there with the roof? Were you out there?
Every day.
He was holding buckets like in the sky.
Every day, Mr. Blair, right? Oh, I mean, we, on a bad rain, we, with the Bucket Brigade, we'd go out, and everybody knew where they'd go, about 127 of them, I think, at one point in time.
Those units were vibrating on that roof, and so it just, it just, my goodness.
It was a mess.
It was.
But, you know, Riverdale was put on at the very same time that Oakland was, there wasn't a single problem with...
Must've been poor leadership.
It was. I think probably was, the site form and attitude. Oh, you're talking about at school? The administration.
Administration messed up.
Number 10.
Number 10 is facilities roof inspection proposal. We are fast approaching the time to renew the roof inspection contract. Consolidated Roofing Inspectors with Lead Inspector Dan Sinclair Senior has done an outstanding job on inspections and follow-up on the school system's roofs for the past several years. With approximately 8 million square feet of roofing in the area in the school system, it is critical that we maintain our current inspection process to assure problems are caused and resolved early to prevent roof damage and failure. A new proposal from Consolidated Roofing Inspections is presented for the Rutherford County School Board's review. This proposal is similar in scope to the previous one with a 1.75% inspection fee on new roofs, $425 per inspection on existing buildings, and $75 per portable per visit. The awarded proposal shall run for a period of 12 months with four options to renew annually for an additional 12-month period under the same terms and conditions upon mutual agreement by both parties. However, in no event shall the contract term exceed a total of 60 months. Inspection is a professional service, and the motion is to recommend approval. Motion to approve the roof inspection proposal submitted by Consolidated Roof Inspections as presented.
How long we had this, Mr. Clardy? Mr. Sinclair? It's over years, hasn't it?
He's been here for at least nine years and probably a couple years before that, done an excellent job for us.
I agree.
He's, he's tough on roofers if they do not do a very good job.
Yeah, they don't last long around him.
He's tough on lots of other guys.
Any other comments? Number 11, Mr. Odom.
Number 11 is charter schools. The Director of Schools received a letter of intent to apply for public charter school for the 2014-15 school year from Learning Athletics and Wellness Foundation Sports Academy, and this is a Nashville group. Board policy requires the board to appoint a review team to assist in reviewing and evaluating charter school applications. The team shall be composed of members of the administrative staff, or the district, community members, and members of the board. The Director shall make a recommendation to the board, of which members of his administrative staff should be appointed to the team in February of each year. The board named the following members in February 2013, Paula Barnes, Jeff Sandvig, Richard Zagow, The board named the following members in February two thousand thirteen, Paula Barnes, Jeff Sandvik, Richard Zagow, James Evans, and Shirley Bell. The board must also identify all the members of the team and designate a Chairman of the Review Team at its first meeting in March each year. Computer stopped.
There you go, mine.
I've got it again. Recommend approval, motion to approve the following as members of the charter school review team for two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Paula Barnes, Jeff Sandvik, Richard Zagow, James Evans, and Shirley Bell as administrative staff. Bob Bullen will serve as a community member, and Tim Tackett as a board member. Mr. Tackett shall also serve as Chairman of the Review Team. Several bills in the legislature dealing with this, but they may, the current one, it looks like it's tracking through, is they may change the appeals group. It would still have to be dealt with at the local level. But then, rather than being appealed directly, maybe to the State Board of Education, may go to an independent authority if all of these bills pass. We do not know yet, but we still have to do our part, it looks like.
Seems like an appropriate time to renew our thought process, those in attendance, those listening and otherwise, this board's objection to the charter school proposals that are taking place. We have no choice, if that's the way it comes down, if applications come, we have to deal with it. So that's what we're looking to do. But from a personal standpoint, I don't want this to be reflective that this is charter schools or something that I would favor. I think our school system here does an excellent job. I'm hopeful that we will be able to stay one hundred percent public school.
I'll just make a general comment. I contacted Mr. Tackett in regards to this, as I was charged to do this, and I appreciate him, his willingness to do it. I think with his experience in the school system, I thought he was a perfect choice, but also to lead as a Chairman. So I just wanted to let the board be aware of that. And then also, I don't know how the rest have been fared, but I've sent letters to all legislators, the governor. I got one response back. And the one response isn't positive, I'll just say that. They asked what we wanted back in the file, we give it to them, and we just see how it comes. Right now, it's not looking too well in our favor of what we asked for, in my opinion, so. But we'll have to deal with whatever comes down the pike, I guess, so. Anybody else?
Yeah, once again, Dave and I both attended a board training session today, and in discussion with other people, or there, other TSBA leaders and so forth. The stonewall that we're receiving from our folks is statewide, and I think the term stonewall is exactly what we heard used more. And the frustration from those trying to get something through is clear. But unfortunately, I think the die is cast in some directions that we're not favorable to.
Basically, what I heard was, they're just ignoring everybody, all the board people. They don't care what we have to say.
Well, I'll go back to last fall when they asked us what we wanted, and we told them.
We told them.
As far as I'm concerned, they're doing just the opposite of what we asked for, so. We just must have to move on down, deal with it, I guess. Anybody else?
I was told right at the beginning of the meeting, there'll be a voucher meeting at nine o'clock. And is this the representative, the reps, rather than the Senate? Is this a...
It's a committee meeting.
It's a House.
It is the House.
Education committee.
So it'll be the House would meet at nine o'clock at legislative class tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Nine o'clock, I think it's in room twelve, we're not sure.
That's Education Committee, you say, the House?
The House met Tuesday, maybe this is Senate, which one, I'm not sure. House Education met Tuesday, so I'm not sure, it may be Senate.
Might be Senate.
I think, I think it's Senate, because I think Tuesday, since Thursday.
The House met today?
They meet on Tuesday, so I think it's probably the Senate, I think I'm correct.
Everybody to get it out of committee, I think, nine to two, or something like that, seven to two or something.
What we're talking about, running parallel, somewhat parallel to your charter, is the voucher plan. The governor has them proposed that they try charters on a limited basis for schools that might be in the lower ten percent of the state in performance. And he was targeting a few, I think up to five thousand or so total students in the Memphis area, in the Nashville area, to provide options. Since he introduced that, some of the same legislators that we're talking about are introducing amendments to that that are trying to get this to cover all school districts, regardless of, not just the Memphis and Nashville area, but any district in the state of Tennessee. As you look at this from a public standpoint, there's a couple of things, the funding, some of the amendments and all, I mean, there's still details to be worked out. But basically, you would take that the state fund average daily membership monies for that student, which is between the four to five thousand dollar range. Also, there's proposed amendment to this, that the local option mandated amount would be included. So Mr. Sandvik gave me some numbers, that's over eighteen hundred dollars. So, I mean, if you're listening on TV or something like this, if these turn out to be students who have never been in our schools, or anything involved, then it may take a property tax increase to pay the eighteen hundred dollars per student that might go on this voucher offer that may never have been our student. They may not be attending us now, they may be anything from home school, private school, or any other particular option. So if you look at the fiscal note on those bills, it's substantial. So it's an increased cost for the state of Tennessee, and an increased cost for the local.
There definitely be a profit increase, so.
Well, just if you take into consideration transportation, utilities, the year they would take to get the teacher, teacher and building ratio squared away, and not to mention trying to pay back these amortized loans for the schools that we have built, and one that we're building now. So I just, I don't see how an increased property tax couldn't happen.
Well, you know, but if they're private, or a home school, we have never built a space, or a room, or a thing for that. So this would be, have to be new monies if it encompasses some of those. So there are issues.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt. Well, somebody tell me, I read in Tennessee a couple of weeks ago, that the governor wants to expand the voucher system, five thousand this year, but the twenty sixteen, twenty thousand. Is that right? I can't find, there's no information being made available to the general public.
I read the same thing. I don't, I do not know whether that's still looking at the lowest ten percent of schools, exactly what, that's, there's several items that's not clear to it, so we just, we don't know.
We'll, in response to that, we'll see if we can find something out. It may be good luck, I don't know, but.
Let me ask this, and I might be off base on this, but the committee that we formed here with Mr. Tackett as Chairman, would it be in our best interest to ask a county commissioner to set in on it? I mean, since they're gonna have to be funding it and be in the loop somewhere, I mean.
Is there a number specified for our charter school committee?
There's not a number, but I mean, the people that are designated beyond the committee are listed in this agenda. But if you wanted to have a commissioner as your community member, I suppose you could do that, but we need...
That would be a possibility.
And he's probably well, as well thought of as any president or former commissioner as I can think of, so. So he's good, Bob Bullen.
Dr. Bullen.
Okay, that was fine.
Okay, if you've got strong feelings on, well, not Mr. Clardy.
I am correct that we have had charter school, at least, I don't know that we've ever seen a proposal per se, but we've been given notice that a proposal might be forthcoming in the past, that never gets happens.
It's the same group, they, a year later, basically from what we originally were told. And they have to propose, again, send us their proposal of how they will operate, what students, what ages, grade groupings, and that sort of thing. Initially, this one was talking about, starting with kindergarten, first grade, some of those, and a phase in over a number of years. But, I mean, somebody else could come forward too, it just kinda depends on what happens, I think, in the legislature.
What comes out of it, I guess.
I think so.
Any other comments? Number twelve, Michael.
Number twelve is our new and revised policies. The first one is Policy five point three oh two sick leave. The purpose of this revision is to change the definition of immediate family member for the bereavement leave to the same definition of immediate family for sick leave. B, Policy four point six oh two, is grade point average and class rank. The purpose of this revision is to add salutatorian requirements to the existing policy and to specify requirements for valedictorian. Salutatorian must be met by the end of the seventh semester, beginning in the fourteenth, fifteenth school year. These requirements become effective with all students who begin high school in two thousand nine, ten school year. Number C there is Policy six point three oh four, which is student discrimination, harassment, and bullying intimidation. Purpose of this revision is to reflect the most current Tennessee School Boards Association policy model on this issue by incorporating new statutory reporting requirements and definitions for cyberbullying and hazing. And D is adoption of Policy three point two eleven. My computer's giving me fits tonight, it's going off on me. Policy three point, three point two eleven, energy use and conservation. Purpose of this adoption, there is a policy the school system may be able to access state funding for energy conservation projects. First step towards accessing the funding is the adoption of an energy use and conservation policy for the district. The policy will also allow for a percentage of the savings derived from the program to be used for further conservation projects. E is the adoption of Policy four point four zero six one, this employer use of social media. Purpose of the revision, with the increased use of social media by students and employees, school districts have a need for a policy providing guidance and regulation in this area. This policy was developed after reviewing the Tennessee School Board Association's model policy, along with several other school system's policies. And we actually received this afternoon, another potential here that came from the Commissioner of Education about further revision, something in that, that may be coming down. I forwarded that to Angel, so that'll, if there's something required, that'll come up a little bit later.
That's the second reading, and the final reading, so we'll vote on that Thursday night.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If there are no board members who would object, I would be willing on Thursday to make a motion to dispense with the reading, on the second reading, for the sake of efficiency, and move straight to the vote.
I'm good with that, everybody else is?
And board members serve on the policy committee for people watching us on television, so you've read it several times.
Correct.
Already.
I don't think we need to deal with thirteen tonight, do we?
Wouldn't have to.
General discussion, fourteen. Anybody else?
I am going to try to attend the, that meeting at nine o'clock in the morning at legislative class, and so if anybody'd like to go, I'll tell them.
Could I mention a couple of things here, if you'd be short for you? I received this email today from Karen Metter, which is one of the staff that works under Paula, with our Student Services. And we've done something in Rutherford County that hadn't been done in the area before, not the first time, but I thought you would enjoy this. "Mr. Odom, we are at capacity for our military education training the last two days. We had employees and military personnel across the county in attendance. The training was focused on how to identify military children and help them with their issues and concerns. We learned about a wealth of resources that are available to help both the students and their families. The resources provided will not only help with our military children, but students all across our county that are learning how to be resilient through difficult circumstances. Thank you for bringing this training to Rutherford County. The Military Child Coalition, which is the names that we, of this organization, has had this program for fifteen years, but this is the first training in the middle Tennessee area. They sent people from Virginia, a lady from Alabama came up. We have military people from our area and all, and you had social workers, we had psychologists, we had guidance counselors from in our system. But I think they really learned a lot, it was a two-day training, about how to deal with children in the stressful conditions that goes beyond even this military training. So, didn't cost us anything, actually they provided us with a lot of materials and all, so I think it was a real win-win situation."
And I know Lieutenant Colonel Reed was very appreciative that the central office supported the event. And thank you, Mr. Odom, for welcoming everybody, they appreciated you as the Director of Schools. That meant a lot to them, that you were willing to take time out of your day to welcome everybody, so thank you for that.
Mr. Reed was a former Smyrna fellow, I think, may have even been around David Yuri at one time. But he is in Putnam County now, but did come down for the training, so a very good one. You have on your desk, one of your board members asked to take a look at the world history for sixth grade, so each of you have a copy of that, if you wanna look at that, this up and coming. A couple of other sheets of paper that kinda tells you what the state curriculum requires for sixth grade, basically that sort of thing. Mostly, in sixth grade, when you're studying, it's really the who, what, whens, and wheres, and not a lot of the whys, and the causation things. That typically occurs more at high school or college level, when you look at that. But it's mostly informational purposes that you have in the elementary curriculum. But anyway, take a look at those two documents, if you would.
Michael.
Chairman, in preparation for the meeting, I took a look at the consent agenda, and I'll go back to that. The only concern that I had there was the description for the helmets that are specified have four different descriptions. This evening, when I arrived at the meeting, I was told that even though the description is for a SHUT DNA helmet, or something of that nature, and the four different helmets that are designated there, because Rydell came in as the low bidder, the Rydell helmet is actually the one that'll be specified. My only concern here is with the amount of coverage and emphasis that concussion injuries are getting. If we're gonna invest in helmets, that we invest in the right ones, I'm gonna seek a little additional information. It, the only thing that has come up for me is, if there are four different choices there, would the board be interested to qualify three of the four? And it appears, from looking as the meeting has gone on here, with some information I was given right at the beginning, again, three of the four helmets may be helmets that are five-star helmets, as opposed to a five-star and a four-star helmet. We may choose to say that fourth helmet is not one that we want to purchase, or we wanna zero in on that best performing helmet in relation to concussion injuries. I'm gonna look into it some more, if there's anything there, I'll let you know Thursday night or before.
Is it University of Virginia ratings that did those ratings?
Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech, okay.
Well, let me, excuse me, let me say, go out and talk to T double S double A, they have a standard that's gotta have that seal. They have, last year, we looked at concussions very hard. They might have a little bit more information this year on it, but the rule books have not come out that specifies four or five stars. But give them a call down there in Nashville.
You go ahead, Mr. Bullen.
But just with a successful coach that has been hired for Stewart's Creek, and with the former Titan, who's a professional athlete, as our athletic director, I would, I would hope that both of those individuals have been, been involved in selecting, you know, this headgear. And I would also think as a motorcycle rider, that, you know, I have a DOT helmet, and it's specified as DOT approved. And I would think these would also have the same certification, since they're gonna be used, you know, with our, with our children. So I can't imagine anyone would select... anyone would, would select a helmet that would not be certified anyway.
I've just come back, general comment, I, I think, uh, this is a bid for the new high school, correct?
Or any other.
What about the other high schools? Uh, they're buying the helmets on their own.
Is it contract fronts? Is that what it, it's an overall, system-wide contract?
Is this system-wide or, or just for the new school?
System-wide.
Okay.
But it's intentionally for the new school.
So what you're, so, e- existing school out here, if they're purchasing football helmets or their athletic booster clubs or whatever, uh, they've got to purchase one of these three.
If they are under, if they are buying less than ten thousand dollars worth, they would not go on this bid.
Okay.
I, I, I would like to comment, this, and I, I understand the reason for the, the confusion, we will on these bids accept items that are equal to or better than, and that's why the description we sent out for bid was the SHUT whatever, but we felt that the Rydell was a better grade. And in, indeed it is, uh, you know, at least, at least three of the four are testing out better than the one SHUT helmet that is equivalent to the Rydells, you know, but each one of the manufacturers has, and my only intention is, I just don't want to assume, uh, anything in such a critical area. Uh, I want to make sure, uh, that our descriptions are, are accurate, uh, and that there's the confidence, uh, that, that, that Rydell revolution, you know, is the, uh, is the one that, that we'd be investing in.
The, the Titans, once upon a time, were using Rydell, they may still, I don't know, because I knew one of the fellow that walked the sidelines with them.
The Rydell is the endorsed and official, uh, helmet for the NFL, so.
I, I can say ninety-five percent of the schools in Tennessee use Rydell. I mean, I have to inspect them every week, so.
Quite honestly, I never would have gotten into it if the description had said Rydell, because that would have been the one that I went, yep, there we go. Uh, but when I saw the SHUT, I said, hmm, I haven't seen that before, I got to better go look into that. So, it was the description that threw me off just a little bit.
Anything else? I'll just make one, one other comment. Uh, uh, I think everybody probably got an invitation to the Teacher of the Year, uh, the twenty-seventh, and it's going to be at Embassy Suites. Uh, the only reason we, we moved is because of the parking situation. Uh, so I just wanted to let everybody be, make sure everybody's aware of that.
Teacher's Club has done a great job over the years.
Oh, it did a great job.
We just kind of outgrew them.
But, and we, we let them know that too, so, that nothing they, nothing they did other than we'd just gotten so big, uh, that we had to look for something with more space, so.
Thursday night, we take your proposal, um, that came from the Budget and Finance Committee to fund the addition design and fund the addition to Blackman Middle School, and then also they changed it to only the design of Smyrna Primary School, so that'll be up for a vote, so if any commissioner you might speak to between now and then, we did, we didn't get a hundred percent vote coming out of the Budget and Finance, but the issue is, and we tried to explain to them, you know, portables are eighty thousand dollars or so a piece when you put a double wide in, and if, we got to have some capacity there to handle at Blackman Middle School for students, so, uh, anyway, that, that's where we are.
Mr. Tackett?
What about, uh, maybe conversations you've had with city schools and where they stand with their possible elementary building program to date?
Uh, the picture's in the paper this morning, the artist's rendering of what the building might, uh, look like, so, and it's, it actually got a timeline of approvals and all, so, I mean, if they can follow that timeline, I think they'll be open a year from now, I mean, actually fourteen, fifteen year, so that, they've got it outlined quite well.
I noticed the overall tract of land that they purchased or actually had donated the twenty-five acres for the elementary school is actually a hundred and ten acre tract, uh, based on conversations that we had had previously, uh, I took note of the opportunity.
Anybody else? I guess if there's nothing else, we'll see everybody Thursday.